The church, as part of their plans, will pave the trail around their property. They just got too close to winter to where we couldn't put the asphalt down. So that'll be done in the spring. Ivory Homes at this point has just built the first phase, which is the southern half of their project. When they move to Phase Two, they'll build the trail across their property.
So is it built across and then around the church?
Around the church and across the future center street alignment. There'll be one gap here then at this property we'll have to look at and address to where we're connected in by the Justice Center. And from that then, you've got the trail from the high school center street all the way down into the River Trail. This next year, year and a half, you'll see us expanding the River Trail up towards the reservoir and I think provide a great network through there.
So we'll be down potentially just to that, that we would need to do to create that full action over there, which is kind of...
Yeah, that's cool.
It's been years and years in the making and it's good to see it finally coming together, so...
We appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great, huh? Gets a ton of use.
Hey, Dave, you know, this, my pointer's dying, but where the ditch is, you know, regardless of who develops it and when, when that happens, they'll have to fill that in, pipe it, and, you know, Dean, I don't know if this is an option, but if you talk to Vic, he's never going to use this. You could, for the cost of piping it, anyway, all I'm saying is I think you could acquire this from him, pipe it, widen the road as part of this improvement, because he has no, he can make no use of that. When he develops it, it'll have to be done, then you can have your connector. You know what I mean?
He still has the pleasure of fronting all of that money.
Well...
That's the...
That's the real cost.
That's the reason for a connector's agreement or that kind of concept.
How much would that, I mean, I'm just...
How much is irrigation?
It's not the same, though, as buying...
The HDP?
It's a welded HDP, you know, the piping of the ditch is probably a hundred dollars a foot.
Is it more than twenty thousand dollars?
Oh, yeah.
To do that?
I would say...
Double that? You think it'd be double that?
Yes.
What?
Especially with the feel for the road, I mean...
Of the discussion that we're having tonight, we'll talk about that.
I've been on that street and they're right. It's very, it's a very narrow little spot because people do park right through here and if you have a bunch of additional traffic, you know, it's concerning.
This might be as much of a city problem as a development problem at this point.
Maybe the city could just put a lien on his property. When he develops, he gets paid, you get paid back.
Okay, lawyer.
Right? No, that's, that's commonly done. I mean, I think he would agree with that. Vic would.
Let me deliver that document.
As long as we can get the right of...
Hand deliver it to a property owner.
That would be a gift to him. He has to, he has to do this anyway.
Absolutely, yeah.
Right now, the only thing I can see we could do...
Yeah, it would be a headache he doesn't have to deal with when it's time.
The only thing I can see we do if we approve this is to...
Every day he wakes up and thinks about developing that, he thinks, oh, I've got to deal with that ditch. So he doesn't do it. Now it's taken care of.
Yeah.
So, doing it now versus, there you go. What are our options, Mr. Anderson, and what's, I mean, obviously, DRC has reviewed this and made a recommendation to us of approving it or recommending it to the City Council.
You have all of the typical options, right? You can make a recommendation tonight, you can continue it. Your recommendation could go one of two ways, particularly on the zoning. Frankly, if the zoning gets approved, then the development approval is kind of an automatic. The applicant at that point in time would have a right to have his project approved because it does meet our standards. Off-site, infrastructure limitations like this or deficiencies, that can be certainly the basis for withholding a zone change, just saying this isn't the right time. You could use the zone change proposal as the basis to require the applicant to do additional things. You have that kind of latitude or ultimately the City Council would. And in this case, you know, like I said, and frankly, yeah, I know the property owner that we're talking about here personally. I like him, we get along well, but at the same time, I know he can be a challenge to work with. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect necessarily his neighbor, whoever that is, to be able to, to make much progress in terms of addressing both a land acquisition kind of an issue and an improvement issue like what this would be. I mean, obviously, we're talking about a very expensive improvement with piping something of that size. So I guess I'm just offering you my thought, that I really think this issue is something that the city would need to, or at least that we're well-served to, to look at and see if there's not a solution for that. And that should be the situation whether a development gets approved here or not. It sounds like to me, it sounds like this is a problem that...
It's an issue regardless. Well, and I was going to ask a question, Corey, maybe you can help us out, me out here. Traffic count if it were a school versus traffic count if it were this development? Is there any way of, can you gut feel that?
You know, I, I'm not...
I know you're not a traffic engineer.
True traffic engineer, but a school would create more traffic as far as that peak time of drop-off in the morning and pickup in the afternoon. While the development, you know, creates traffic, maybe ten trips a day per home, that's spread out throughout different times of the day. The peak is where you really have troubles with backups and waiting as, you know, a school would be very much more disastrous to the road network at drop-off times and when people are trying to get to work, just as they're seeing on the south end of that development as people are heading to Riverview. That would create more of a gridlock at that time.
I think the school would do that, too, because it really has the basis, I mean, it would not be a...
Yeah.
I mean, it was distance, but I think they would probably look at that.
So, Corey, as your engineer, what would you recommend to do to help that out in order to make this subdivision work?
You know, the easiest answer today, you know, short-term and probably from a financial standpoint would be to restrict parking. Today's answer, as far as how we build roads, we build half of the road plus ten feet plus a shoulder. This got built with half plus, probably not quite ten feet, but no shoulder, and it's almost vertical into the ditch and it's six to eight feet. I mean, it's, it's bad. The only real answer would be to pipe the ditch and widen the road.
So is there any chance the city would do that, would pay for that and then just put a lien on the property?
I think if City Council were to direct staff to budget money to go towards this and start working with the property owner, it could, as the city typically does not build roads. Developer and property owners build roads.
I don't think the city would go in there and eminent domain that, there's no...
That's the problem. I, the infrastructure to build is one thing and the cost, but if a property owner is not willing to, to help or sell their land, eminent domain, that, that is a whole nother level in cost.
So could, could we go in and maybe red curb the curb on this side and somehow put a fence or something along that right now to, to help that out? Or is it still...
No, it's a fence, it's just, it drops right there.
Okay, so in other words, we still, we still have an infrastructure problem there.
Yeah, I, I think if the parking's not there, it certainly doesn't fully solve the problem, but I think it helps as a property owner down there.
You're passing up each other, yes.
Yes, and, and in some ways, narrow roads and not the situation of a ditch, that helps with speeding and things like that, so...
In your, in your opinion, if we red curve these here, would that help? That's so people can't park on there?
Definitely help, definitely help. But I mean, you're adding all those, I mean, construction vehicles, all fifty more homes...
And there'll, and there'll be some construction for a while, that's for sure.
And we could probably limit our construction access, would be wanting to look at that to the other side coming up first, just to help out a little bit, you know? We would do a temporary access over there.
I mean, none of those homeowners here, I don't know how they feel about, no longer being...
We could guess, though.
It would be a tough pill to swallow.
I'm going to show up to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
You're telling them that they can park two cars there and can't have visitors.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult balance.
At least not, if people might have to park around, or ultimately, they would, they park around the corner, then in front of somebody else's house.
It's really, it's really four houses that we're talking about here, because this house has, you know, theoretically something here. So it's really one, two, three, four, before you hit to the freedom zone.
And also with the, there's not a lot of frontage with these lots. It's one parking space basically in front of each home is what they have to work with. So really talking about eliminating four parking spaces if we were to red curve that.
This is a really great subdivision. It really is. It's a good one. It's really a good one. It's too bad we can't have an access one up the first south with it. That would really solve a lot of problems.
Definitely.
That infrastructure is a problem. I mean, it truly is. I'm just, you know, all the, you know, as I look at the whole subdivision, you know, and as they got developed, you know, everybody's got a concern on it, you know, and here we are, we've got some more that's going to impact this whole subdivision with only three or four access to it. And when this other piece of property ever develops, who knows? You know, who knows with him? And so...
How far down do you have to go before we, you, we could turn this and come out to first south?
I think you'd be just perhaps about a hundred feet beyond the edge of the subdivision. It's not far.
So another block?
Again, if the adjacent property owner would be willing to sell a lot in the road, that could work, but I...
Add a lot right there and finish that road out?
That's a tough sell.
You're saying you don't think...
No one seems to...
So that, okay. I know, he's...
So he's not interested in selling the property, right?
No, I think his, I mean...
He'll do his own thing on his own timeframe, right? Without anybody telling him.
Well, I think that would be an advantage for the rest of his property if that happened.
It absolutely is, absolutely. But...
Because I, I mean, I'd like to say that before.
Here's my recommendation, okay? Let's table this for a month. Let's take it back to engineering and take a look to see what we can do here to improve this little area right here, to try to make this work. That's the only thing that's hurting this project right there, is that little infrastructure problem right there. If there's a way that we can fix that, even if we look at the traffic studies and where we can maybe red curve that and somehow fix that so that drop-off, I mean, somehow protect that drop-off and make it work for right now, I'd like to do it.
Would those homeowners have been noticed with this? Were they within that?
Uh, no. The sign was way down.
Well, they, they should have received a...
There's a mailer within three hundred feet.
It would have gone out like this. So it's within three hundred feet of the property, if that helps. Yeah, not all of them, no. Four or five lots away.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Richard, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we continue this till next month until we can talk to engineering about a solution that we can fix that infrastructure there, or a solution on that infrastructure.
I mean, it, what's, here's what my issue's going to be, is I've got to move that irrigation line, and that needs to be moved before water flows.
What's irrigation line?
The one on the south side.
Oh, we're talking next month?
We're talking two weeks.
We're talking two weeks from now.
We're talking in February?
Two weeks from now.
Yeah, we're talking February. Irrigation's not going to happen till April.
So you'd be potentially City Council meeting third week in February. When is one, you know when they start?
In, in April, first of April.
If they can get it, late March, they try to, but April's more the guarantee.
The wet year, the way it is, I'll bet you'd be the first of April.
Yeah, you're probably right.
Yeah, I mean, would you be willing to do that?
Further address these issues.
Because City Council's going to look at it, right?
They could recommend it and then tell the City Council to do that.
No, I mean, I mean...
I've been on the City Council, okay? And I hate it. My planning and zoning sends it to the City Council without us making approval. I don't think that's right.
Well, does it, do you guys have time to look into it before City Council?
You're going to look at it, if they'll have time to look at it before City Council, that could be part of your recommendation.
There's, there's two meetings in February. If we make ours the first of February, they can look at it the third Tuesday of February. How's that?
Actually, it'd be the, it'd be the first Tuesday in February, potentially.
Yep, that's correct.
Because it just happens to be that the first Wednesday of February is the first...
So February seventh.
So I mean, the same date for him either way.
I just want to make sure this infrastructure doesn't cause, you know, this big of a problem.
I just, I mean, I know how it is with for me, irrigation, that's, it's a problem. It's that they re-weld that, relocate, and it's got to bend down that curb.
Hey, I have irrigation, and I guarantee I don't get my water till the end of March or the first of April.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Davis. Do I have a second?
So you're saying the motion is to table, to look, take a further look at the road there?
First of February.
Correct.
And then, and then you're able to get in in the second week of February?
We'd go ahead and notice a public hearing with the City Council for that second week in February.
Because I think we could make a, you know, recommendation, one way or the other, on that February first meeting, so...
I'll second it, yeah.
If someone were to talk to that homeowner, just in case he happens to want to, be okay with, because if someone's already dealing with that irrigation, maybe they can just deal with all of it at the same time and if he...
That's certainly an option we'll look at, yeah.
Yeah, I'll leave that, I'll leave that as a...
And at least talk to the landowner and see what...
You can ask the landlord, right?
We'll do all we can to approach and talk to him. I know that's not a concrete answer.
He's laughing, I mean, we know why.
Yeah.
Yes, we could.
And Dave's going to take care of that, so...
Yeah.
It's a nice book screen.
Donuts, donuts, is that what it takes? Donuts, maybe? I don't know. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Davis and a second by Commissioner Nielsen.
Call him right now.
We'll go with a roll call vote, starting with Gens.
Aye. I mean, I, yeah, I approve.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you so much. We really do appreciate your feedback. Next item is the Maple Mountain Estates' reapproval. You again, Dean.
Are you like repurposing?
We're going to have to, we're going to have to start charging your rent.
I'm going to pay for that office space down there, at least near town. Hat trick, right?
Hat trick, yeah.
And this one, this one, do you give a... Chris, this is not...
Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
How about another one of those favors? Um, this is a favor, and that's, that's the best way to say it. We really appreciate the applicant working with the city. We've talked a little bit with you about a project that's in the works that we really hope will come to fruition. There aren't any concrete plans today to make it happen, but in essence, if you can kind of picture this with me, there are the railroad tracks that run parallel to State Road 51, the old Springville Highway. So that's a track that comes down State Road 51 or next to it, and then ends up running parallel to US Highway Six and ultimately up...
We talked about this with those storage units.
Spanish Fork Canyon.
Correct.
So this is, so the tracks that had the accident?
We did, yes. So, in short, there's this rail line here, which is one of two rail lines that transect this part of the community to get trains from Provo to Price. The other rail line comes out and runs along what is or will be the Spanish Fork-Mappleton city boundary. So one's here and one's here, and in short, for a variety of different reasons, a project that would remove this line and consolidate it next to this line, so you'd still have two sets of tracks, but they'd both be in one corridor here. That project is really gaining some momentum, and there's some support from Railroad, UDOT, other groups to make that happen. And as we've met with them over the course of the last year to talk about what would be required in order to make that ultimately doable and buildable, we've discovered that some additional right-of-ways necessary next to the existing rail line over here. So you know that a couple of times before now, we've approved different layouts for this project. This is the third one now that comes before you, and we really appreciate the applicant. And I don't know how well you can see on the actual plat itself, but they have set an additional, an additional sixty feet of right-of-way aside, which you can see right...
I'm sorry, I'm trying.
Problem. You see this, this land here? That's sixty feet or fifty feet? I say sixty.
It's around fifty feet.
One part fifty, one part thirty.
Through this section, yeah, it's fifty through here.
You'll be getting this other one, too. I've got to redo the Maple Park one you approved before, too. That's about thirty going through that one to get that over.
So we approved the development here. The applicant started to build homes even in it, and we approached him and said, hey, we really don't want you to develop lots right up against the existing rail line as was previously approved and then have to do something that, you know, might be horrible down the road in order to facilitate an additional set of rail tracks running through here. Again, we appreciate the applicant working with us. We appreciate him having his engineer redesign the subdivision. They've done that, I think, really to optimize still the development potential of the property. I appreciate the, the road layout. I think it works very, very well, and they would dedicate with the project this land to the city so that we'll be ready to go for when that project happens, and it's looking more like when than if. So with that said, we've reviewed the project. We recommend that it be approved, and I think that's it.
Did, did the number of lots change or did the...
Yeah, I think we lost three or four lots.
Two.
Under two?
I think it's two.
What are we at right there?
That was pretty nice of them.
Oh, I think the other, so the other Maple, is that the... Our, we were lost, although I had some more ground. So a couple, I got some good notes.
Ninety-six lots.
Do you want to move back a couple?
Just a couple things we actually were helped to solve, too. So the, there's a, that same HDP expensive pipe comes through here. Well, before, these were, so when this is originally approved, this was a back, this was the backyards of homes. So it was, the pipe would be on the, it was going to be on this other piece of property. Well, then after that, we tied this up and approved it. Well, ended up that was going to be running down through the backyards. Irrigation companies hate that. So we were able to relocate the road to probably satisfy a really good need there, that now that irrigation can stay right in the, for the access and stuff, right along the frontage of that. So that was a good, good thing that happened there. And then when you see the other Maple Park, when I was able to, there's a back, there's a triangle down the bottom of that that was never, well, I ended up finally getting through to him, and we were going to add, we're going to add that to that project so it'll finish off that whole area down there and tie it all in, so... And then the other foot in the hole was kind of funny, the, the reason why there were two tracks, um, the old days locomoes weren't as powerful, so they had to, they had to go up and they had to go...
Build some speed, steam.
...make it up the hill again, so now likely they have more horsepower, I guess.
That's interesting.
All right, well, this is a preliminary plat. Is it, it is a public hearing? We need to open that up? Is that right?
There's not a public hearing, it's just a...
Not a public hearing. Sweet. I don't remember, so...
There's no public.
There's no public. Well, but I'd, I'd still have to officially do it, right? So, so that your record, maybe I could just have said that, right? Just show it. No, just kidding, we wouldn't do that, so... Any comments, questions, conversation amongst the plating commission? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that we make a recommendation to City Council that we approve the Maple Mountain Estate amended preliminary plat.
A motion from Commissioner Davis. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Tag. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I wonder. Feel like I'm a baseball player. Thirty-three percent.
You guys are just a little busy these days, aren't you?
Yeah.
You know we are. It's, it's been good, so we love Spanish Fork, so it's, it's good. It's local for us.
It's got nine innings, so you got another bat.
That's right. All right, last item on our agenda, I believe, is Title 15 amendments.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you. We talked about this just a little bit before your last meeting, and the really only background, I guess, that I'd like to provide is that from an urban planning perspective, and this goes back to kind of the late eighties, early nineties, when people could start to reflect on the kind of development that had occurred really since World War II, so fifty, sixty, seventies, where you have retail businesses and then a whole big sea of parking is the phrase that gets used quite a bit, with, you know, fifty, sixties and seventies, it was all asphalt, a lot of times no landscaping out there or anything. Inhospitable, you know, really unless you're in an air-conditioned vehicle, getting in and out of the store, lots of times those parking areas were underutilized because entities like Spanish Fork City required more parking than what was really needed. Of course, we don't do that anymore, but in light of just sort of the dismal situation that that created in a lot of communities and along a lot of highway corridors and just through a lot of commercial districts, there started to be significant pushback. It started to come from architects, urban designers, kind of a new subset of the urban planning profession that was really born in the nineteen nineties. And among the many things that they suggested communities should do in order to make their cities a more attractive place to be was to be more discreet with parking and also to make buildings more accessible for people that might be walking down a street. And the way that that is proposed to be accomplished is get your non-residential buildings out closer to the street where you can and put parking behind. And that's a model that personally I think is ideal, at least in a lot of cases. Of course, with some retailers, you have big boxes, they have a model that they're not going to deviate from, so any, anybody that we think about in terms of the Target or a Walmart or a Lowe's or Home Depot, they don't do that, at least not in a market like ours. But in situations like, um, I'm trying to think of a good example here in town. We almost did it, for example, with the building that the Italian Place is in, you know, Seventh North and Main Street, and frankly, I think we really regret now that that building's not out on the corner, so Italian Place would be on the corner and the parking would be back around for a few different reasons. I think it would have been very beneficial for the developer, and I think it would just look better. But what I'm going to suggest you guys consider tonight isn't any kind of a silver bullet that would require somebody to build that way, but I think it does provide very meaningful encouragement by way of allowing them to build a little bit closer to the actual public right-of-way, therefore to be able to use their site a little bit more efficiently and to justify that kind of model that I described with the building next to the street and parking behind instead of doing it the other way. Right now, in one respect, there's a big encouragement to do it the other way because there are setbacks if the buildings located away from the street are such that they're just not required in a lot of cases to, to provide as much land and, and a setback, and therefore oftentimes a developer can use a property more efficiently if, again, that, that parking's next to the street and the building's behind. This would help, I think, again, just provide a little bit more encouragement. As I looked at this, since we talked about it in December and discussed it with the city attorney, we really just took the perspective of, okay, let's think of all the reasons that this can't work or won't work, or, you know, what problems we're going to have, and we really couldn't come up with any. As long as we still have, for example, thirty feet between a building and the actual street curb, we're not going to have visibility issues. I've talked with Bruce, I think, a little bit about some development that's happening in Provo where buildings are so close to the street that I think you run into just almost some aesthetic issues from that perspective, like literally a building right next to the edge of a sidewalk. And with what we're proposing here, you would still need to have some space there. There would still be some landscaping, but not as much as what we require now. And given that, again, we can't think of a reason to not make these changes and, again, just provide another option to somebody that's designing a site. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
There, in terms of the text that needs to be changed, there's obviously... In terms of the text that needs to be changed, there's obviously not much, just we can see they're in red. So changing a twenty to a fifteen. Here, we're suggesting that a range be included. And again, here we go from twenty down to fifteen, keeping the same distance from the building to the curb is what we have now. Which incidentally, some of you guys remember, we, we did change this just a few months ago for a project that's under construction now down on Volunteer Drive. Which is when this language got inserted into the code to start with. So it's fairly new. But we're not talking about a big change.
So Provo, you're saying, has even a more lenient setback requirement than this with the, with the proposed changes?
Yeah, in certain situations, the few that come to my mind that, for a few different reasons, frankly, make me a little bit uneasy because you have a building literally right next to a sidewalk. And I'm wondering about, Jesus, what if someday you want a ten-foot sidewalk instead of a five-foot sidewalk? Or you need to do any kind of expansion at all? You're just, you're stuck. The project that's been constructed and has been there for a couple of years, that's immediately across the street to the north from the commuter rail stop, for example. If you ever drive by that, you might want to take a look at it.
Residential, four-story residential there on the corner, is that the one you're talking about?
Yeah. There's a project that was just finished up
Starting crossing, I think.
in the fall on Ninth East as well, that's same thing, just as well as other projects downtown where there's just no room. And again, I've bought into the idea that putting dwellings closer to the street, kind of like we have down in Main Street, along Main Street downtown. For a lot of different reasons, that can be very, very good and useful. But I like the idea that still we're, we're giving ourselves a little bit of room to work with here as opposed to having something right next to the sidewalk.
Any other questions? So I just want to disclose that the project that kind of is the trigger for that is, I'm the architect on it. So I will recuse myself from this vote, but want to make sure everybody knew that.
Are we just making a recommendation?
Yeah, it'll be a recommendation. And again, public hearing for this one, though, right? Okay. So open the public hearing. Motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No one's here. Close the public hearing. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We did it, right, Jason? I know, it is.
You guys are so fast, I can't even keep track of your names.
You can put anybody in there, we'll believe you.
So can I just make the right, all right, so I'll make propose that we make this recommendation for the changes to Title Fifteen that change the setback requirements as have been described.
We have a motion from Commissioner Tag. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion before we roll call or do a vote?
Progressive thinking.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Any other business that you have, Mr. Anderson?
Two things real quick to bring up. First of all, we had an opportunity to get together outside of a commission meeting last year. I can't remember if we did that in February or March. Invited friends, wives to that and just went out for dinner. Love to do that again. At least that's our thought as staff. For a few different reasons, we'd love to do that in February, maybe, instead of March. Scheduling-wise, that's a little bit easier for us. Love to get your thoughts on that. Maybe we could bounce around some different dates to see if there's, well, to make sure that there's a time that would work for anybody that would want to join us. And anyway, I just throw that out as food for thought.
If you'll just want to email the commission on some dates, then we can respond.
Yeah, great. I'll do that. Other thing, gents, I've considered to be a friend, a good friend. And for purposes, I guess, of where I'm at right now, maybe more importantly, I consider you to be a very good friend of your community and Spanish Fork City. Both when you were on the city council and since, when you've been serving as a planning commissioner. I've always enjoyed interactions that I've had with you. I've really appreciated the way that you've gone about your business, the way you've worked with the community. I think you've represented the community, again, in a couple of different ways, very, very well. And you'll be missed. You really will be.
Well, thanks. I write back at you.
Not, not bad.
City's always been really good. I've really enjoyed all the work I've been able to do here.
Not bad for an attorney, huh?
Yeah. What's going on is I, so I work with the High Line Canal Company and they have their meetings on the same day as this meeting. This last year, I've kind of been able to jockey between both, but it's just, anyway, just time to. So I feel, I feel kind of bad to, to leave, but I've really enjoyed it, working with all of you. Been really good and the city has a lot of good people working here for it, volunteers and employees too. So it's always good to have the experts, you know, over here in our corner when we need them in these meetings and without them, we could never, could never do it. But, yeah, it's been great.
Very good.
Can I, um, can I mention about what we met with in December?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can I talk about that for a second?
Absolutely.
Did they, I wasn't at the meeting in December, so I don't know if something was set up with that or you just randomly chose me to meet with those people, so.
I was supposed to be there, but I.
You were supposed to be there. So anyway, so I don't know what everybody knows. But we met with some people. Do you want to explain why we had a meeting really quick, just so that I don't?
We want a map of the.
And then I'll just share what my thoughts, what we left from that.
Some of you guys know that there are laws that we have to follow in terms of how many of you we can have together in meetings at any given time before it's an open meeting and we have to follow notice requirements and all that kind of thing. We can have two of you present, so we had an opportunity to to meet with a developer that was just looking to get some feedback from the planning commission. In fact, we had a couple of council members that joined as well, something we've done before a few times, did it with Legacy Farms, for example. The property that we were discussing, you can kind of picture this, it's the south side of Spanish Fork River on the east side of Main Street. These parcels right in here. Actually, I think they might have this one as well. So it's kind of that area, a hundred acres. And we invited Bruce as the chairman to join us, Tracy, because every time we talk about the river bottom, she speaks up, so. We thought qualified her to be there. And in short, we just talked about a development proposal that's been made. It would involve changing our general plan to allow for higher density than what we currently allow for. Right now, the property is designated mixed, sorry, medium-density residential here, kind of with the idea that makes sense to to put something other than agricultural land, maybe right up against Main Street.
Is that where the mosquito farm is?
Yeah.
So half of this parcel here. Yeah, half of this is what Bruce is referring to. And the applicants would like to change this part of our general plan here to develop it with, kind of speaking in real broad terms, twelve thousand square foot lots. Whereas right now, that's part of what I referred to earlier is, you know, the river bottoms, that agricultural designation. And they'd propose to put some townhomes over here. All in all, fairly dense, you know, the seven to eight unit to the acre range altogether. And we talked about it and Tracy shared some thoughts and.
Well, so it was, and it was actually really interesting to see what a developer proposed, what their ideas were. But the two city council members and myself, I mean, I think we all left on the same page that we're not really, really ready to dive into anything specifically to changing the agricultural area, but at the same time, we left within, you know, we should look at it and consider, you know, how far down the road or what do we want and how do we want it to happen? We shouldn't just wait for things to come up. And I, and I think even what happened today, and that's why I understood what Richard was saying, when he was saying this is the gateway and things can change quickly. There are people who are ready to make changes. And so I just think, I had suggested to the two council members, unlike the planning commission, really should do some homework. And I know I think I've mentioned this already. And go look at types of developments in other communities that we think would be appropriate to consider at some point down the road. Not in the, this year or maybe even next year or anything, just down the road and then meet with the city council. I'm not suggesting that we make any changes to the general plan or anything like that. But at least to create maybe a scope of, you know, what would we ever want to do along the river's edge, on the outskirts, along the roadways? And just take into consideration those things and maybe even include a timeframe or not, I don't know. But, I mean, just, we shouldn't just wait around and see what happens. We should at least sit down. The ideas that they presented were some great ideas. There wasn't anything wrong with what they were thinking about, but I think even today, the, you know, the group that came and was to develop that area when it's annexed, you know, what do we want? We don't know what we want. And they're asking for us to tell them, I don't know what we want. So I think we need to do our part. We need to do our job. And our job is to plan, to take the time and go figure it out. And then take those ideas to the city council, see if we're even on the same page with them. Are we even going the right route? If not, we get their feedback and we go do it again.
You know, we've talked, you know, when we met with the city council a couple of months ago, it was almost like, well, we can probably push this off a little bit, but apparently we can't. You know, I mean, here we are already hitting chunks of the river bottom. So I'm, I'm making a asking that maybe we need to meet with the city council again here in the next maybe three months sometime. Again, to talk specifically about the river bottoms, nothing else.
Yeah, I was gonna say, no other items on the agenda?
No other items, the river bottoms and get a general or master plan to what we really want to do because this developer's going to push you hard. I know this developer. I know his background. I know what he wants. And, and he's, he's going to want this real quick.
And I'd like to do our homework first before we meet with them and
I agree.
Have some ideas and talk to them. I don't know. I think that it would be a good idea.
It's a bad deal to be blindsided by people and come up and have them, just exactly like what happened tonight. I mean, I, I was all ready to say, okay, the Warner Projects is an R-112 and it sounds good to me and I think we can carry on. Now all of a sudden, here it is, a brand-new concept. And, and some of the things they had on it was, you know, I, I think, pretty neat. But some of the other concepts I didn't like, you know, and, and when Vicky, you know, wanted me to speak, I just went, because she's, you know, because there's some of the things I didn't want. Okay, well, I'm only one person. You know, I'm only one person here. And so I think we need to talk with staff and city council and us and sit down and make a concept of what we really want the river bottoms to, to go because apparently this is going to go. I mean, all of a sudden, we have kept pushing it off and pushing it off. And now, all of a sudden, we've had two developers come and hit us. And, and once one of them go, they're going to go. They're, you're going to see developers come in and want to buy, buy it like crazy. And landowners, gee, you hit them up at the right price, yeah, I'll, I'll sell. And you know, you've got a lot of things that we've got to consider too, is, is the flood plains and everything else that runs along that river that surely you can't put higher density there. You know, you've got, you know, you've got to have more open spaces. There's some areas that we could probably put a little bit higher density in there and move it in and out. Sort of just like we did with Legacy Farms, only we're the, we make that decision as the city council, as planning commissions and the staff.
Sounds to me we need a work session as a planning commission in the next six weeks, if not sooner.
So I'll add to the dates.
Yeah, I think so. And again, this is the only thing on our agenda for that.
Could you make recommendations of maybe some places that we could, on our own time, maybe go look at?
I've tried to do some research on this myself and trying to find the right, you know how it is with Google, trying to find the right search word to get the right, the answers of what you're looking for. And that's been really difficult. So, yeah, we would look to staff to give us some
It sounds like that they were trying to follow the general plan in density with what he was saying. Is that right or wrong?
No.
So they weren't following it?
With the one down south or the one?
Further north, yes. Further north is.
Further north one.
Right.
Sorry, for the north one.
This one right here.
For the north one, to their credit, yes.
And so if, if they're following the general plan, then either, and we don't like it, then there's a problem.
Well, here's the thing with them. The general plan allows for, you know, maybe three or four different things. And they're proposing kind of the, the one that would allow for the most density. But there are other things also that could be approved that would be consistent with the general plan. And that's where, you know, the weight, I think, falls back on you and the city council to kind of just judge what's best, even though it's consistent with the general plan.
And I, I kind of feel bad that we aren't, we don't know. We don't know.
Well, Tracy.
The thing is, somebody's created something with a lot of thought into, and, and I like the comments that they've made as far as the transitioning goes from the commercial area or the, or the retail areas and the commercial areas that might be along the corridor. And then how you're going to transition out into the rest of the river bottoms. For me, this piece right here is quite a ways from the corridor. Isn't that a quarter of a mile or more away? The piece that, that they were proposing, if you go down, what's it called? This road right here from, from Main Street down to where you start their development. So that's a long ways out into the river bottom. In a transition, I'm thinking, that's a, that's a long transition to go from Main Street, you know, all the way out to where they're at. I feel like I'm out in the country and they're starting this development out in the middle of the country. Is this, is this what we're wanting? This type of a development out there and then we're calling it maybe the gateway to the rest of the river bottoms. I don't know. It possibly could be right there. And so I'm swayed back and forth a little bit on how we should look at that area. I do think it's in the best interest of the city if they create a project that turns out to be successful, you know, for them. And that whatever is created there becomes popular and, and people want it. I really liked that project that we looked at over in Springville, that retirement center. With those, that was about as nice as, I mean, I wanted to move in over there right away. And so I like that idea on, on them doing that. And when they said, well, we might do the whole thing like that, I'm going, yeah, I would, I would be more in favor of that and see the identity out there with it. And so I'm swayed back and forth as I hear people get up and talk, all of a sudden, yeah, that's a good idea and then. And then somebody else has an idea. And so there's so many different possibilities for, for what needs to be done. And so I like, I like the idea of let's get on the same page with everybody. And so we're not all going a different direction or having a different idea. And then the developers, they know what page we're on and they don't have to start guessing. So whatever we put on there is the master plan. And if they work within the parameters of that, then it should be pretty close, you know, to what we're thinking.
The other question I have for this process is, I think it's going to be critical for us to, and I don't know how to do it, get the right amount of public input. We can give us, I mean, there's, you know, six of us and we can give our best estimate and process, but you know, how do we, how do we solicit and? and process, but, you know, how do we solicit and...
Well, public input, put the COBAS, or it stopped this development tonight, otherwise we would have gone ahead with it, is my feeling. I mean, when they talked about all the concerns that they had about being the road concerns and exiting onto First South, you know, all of a sudden, I felt like maybe there are some issues here that we ought to table this and see if we can do something better than what's we're looking at right now for the sake of the community.
So I would look to you to help us develop an outreach.
And that...
Which I know is a can of worms.
And that'll be the topic of a work session, and maybe just to share a little bit more about how I'm looking at it. And incidentally, I met with these applicants early last week, I think it was, kind of a follow-up to the meeting that we had in December. And what I'm simply saying today is that Spanish Fork City does have a plan for these properties, this area here. This is it, one unit for every forty acres. We've thought about it, we've planned, and that's what the city council adopted. And as staff to you and the city council, that's what I'm going to tell you, the applicant, you need to follow, and that's...
We may agree with that when we're all done with it.
Possibly.
We may just say, we're not changing anything.
Got it.
Going to repeal Obamacare, that was happening.
But just to try to be as succinct as I can relative to the idea of getting more people involved, the idea that I sort of wanted to pitch in the last work session that we have with the city council and kind of get a feel for where the discussion was going, so didn't really. But if we're going to talk about making any kind of wholesale changes to what's planned for this area, which from a land use perspective would be the biggest change Spanish Fork City's ever made, then I think we need to reach out to some specific people in the community to bring them in. This is the ad hoc committee kind of a project to have. We don't get a lot of public input when we follow just the broad invitation to come to an open house or something like that, but I think if we reached out to six or seven other people in the community, we could bring in, in addition to you, just a better representation.
So would that be like what we did with the Trails? When we first started talking about the Trails and everything, we kind of formed a Trails Committee and we met several times?
Probably a very good comparison, yeah.
Kind of like that, but it would be the river bottom.
One project, yep.
I mean, that's only if we come to the conclusion that...
That you want to go down that path.
We even wanted to change anything.
Yeah, or in, and maybe you might want to make some changes, but frankly, you know, maybe minor enough that you wouldn't feel like you need to try to cast the net real wide and get a lot of input from a lot of different people.
I think we almost need that before we decide whether we keep it or change it.
Yeah. Last thing I'll say is this probably is a good project also to have some kind of outside consultation to help with, so another thing to think about. Again, this would, depending on what happens...
I mean, you think about something like the Daybreak Development. I don't know how big that was or is and how does it compare to this, but in some ways you have the potential, not to say, not judging Daybreak as good or bad, but, you know, it's made a huge, huge impact on the valley and that part of the valley. And for us, in terms of what we have available to us, it's about the same, I think, so...
I can give some more thought to just different ideas and ways maybe to approach it and talk about that, like send a work session.
Any reason to reach out to BYU or UVU and their planning departments?
Not for this, no. I think this one's, this is about as hard as it gets, really, I think. If you're really, if you're trying to go through kind of the planning process, given all of the different stakeholders, property owners, different interests that are, that are going to be represented.
I mean, education's going to be key in terms of what we're, you know, what we're asking is not that we're going to say we want to build a four-story apartment building on your property today, tomorrow. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking long-term. I mean, this is, yeah, this is U dot long-term.
Does anyone know to look at some comparable areas?
That's, I'll do some digging to see.
Right, do and say, yeah, this is what we want.
Well, there might be. Tell us. I've got a few ideas of what I think. If it's not going to be that, I've got an idea in my mind as to what I think it should be. We might all have different opinions, but that's part of the beauty of the project, right?
To Hawaii, maybe?
Couple places, I've heard of Reston, Virginia.
Okay, any other comments or questions? And make a motion that we adjourn our meeting?
Second.
Second.